If you have any concerns concerning anything that's going on in your town, you can address it with me. But I heard your remarks and I want to make sure that we're all on the same page in terms of them understanding you. Was that? I'm just saying, or if you feel like we're not making it clear to you anything that you have concerns with, let's take it up.
What regard?
But I'm trying to find out, you said that they understand you clearly, and it seems that you have problems with, right? Is that what? What did you say? What did you say in reference to Ms. Randolph and Mr. Daniels?
They were here.
You want me to work up? I heard her say their names and they understand you clearly.
No, that was Joyce.
Oh, that was you?
That was Joyce.
I'm assuming.
I'm assuming it was Joyce.
Okay, I ain't. I'll look at it, right? You didn't get it off?
They were playing or?
Yeah.
Oh, that's, I was like, I was like. Not good, man. Appreciate it. I agree.
The pledge. I am my allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivul- with liberty and justice for. Next item is the approval of the agenda is a motion. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. The agenda has been approved. Citizen participation. Mrs. King.
Yes, we have Joyce Otterby.
Good evening, everyone again. I am one of those people who realize there's a whole lot I don't know. And sometimes when I think the lessons is very, very big. I sought out Mr. Singh last week. He gets some counseling on citizen rights at a meeting. He said, Joyce, if you don't want to hear the truth, do not talk to me. The public gave it to me on proof of my case. One of the first things he said was he had, first of all, I did not know that Florida legislation like you could dissolve us whenever they felt like it. That was a shock. I said, don't they have to have a reason? He's like, no, they don't. But they look for reasons for cover. And I said, well, I've been going through a lot of meetings bringing us some things that, you know, bother being some of our citizens. And I said, I think I think we've changed hearts and minds. Then he crushed me, which I appreciate because he would be honest. He said, you're not going to be able to change anything over there because it's a personal, quote, it's a personal toxic mess. And unless you change the people, you will make no difference. So I've been banging my head against the wall trying to make a difference. And I'll let them say my opinion. Everybody's opinion doesn't have to be my opinion. But at the behest of my ancestors and my younger cousins who are here and my older relatives who are here, I have done my best to just bring some truth and possibly some light into a situation where I realize in his words, it's not making any difference. It makes some people hear stuff, but it's really not making a difference. And understanding that they've been crushed as at any moment for no reason, but are looking for reasons for cover is really debilitating. And he missed a lot of things. You don't have, you don't have a tax base for some things, but he made two things for the care. He said, our town cannot care or get citizens. It becomes a liability, I think, to the county or to other municipalities around. And I might have that with mixed up, being specific about the town by caring for its citizens. And the last thing he said just disgusts me was, and you can't even pay him fees.
Our next one is Angela Johnson.
Oh, good evening. We're not put on this earth for ourselves, but to face, but we're placed here for each other. If you are there always for others, then in a time of need, someone will be there for you. So I would say thank you, everyone, for the prayers. I am over to simple dishes. I sincerely hope for you to keep me looking in your presence. I've been watching and there are a couple of things that I want to say on behalf of the Jones, Gordon, White, Evans, Carson, Blue family. Thank you for your thoughts and prayers on behalf of Courtney, Latonya, and Kaylin and the loss of our dear Kelly, who was laid to rest on last Saturday. Um, I know I heard Ms. Mills mentioned about activity and parking issues in Catalina Park. That is not something that has been, has been silent for the last three or four years. So we would encourage, we beg, we ask for you to please put your attention down there. Um, Chief, we may need to have a higher presence again at stop signs, people running at stop signs. Um, kids are coming home. I noticed today at four thirty, the children are walking home and we're having cars just speeding by them, um, making it unsafe. So if we could put some attention down there as well. Um, I would like to say thank you all for bringing in Duke Energy. I've spoken with a number of residents just this week. They are out taking advantage of the energy saving programs that Duke is doing. So thank you for that relationship. I will say that I did notice today, for some reason, my trash wasn't picked up. So we can get someone out tomorrow to address that. Uh, and then, you know, I, I listened to the fact that there were thirteen grants that are being administered. Being an individual that has worked in grant accounting and in the grant nonprofit world for the last twelve years, um, I would ask that you please understand grant reporting, grant compliance is a very time consuming task. To have that task of thirteen grants sit on the shoulders of one part, and we partied that person if I'm not mistaken, is quite an undertaking. So I would ask that you evaluate whether or not there's an actual need for another grant coordinator or grant personnel person as opposed to looking at whether or not the person that is currently on staff has brought in grants. Because again, there are the responsibilities of meeting deliverables and meeting the outcome measures in order for you to receive the funds. So I would just welcome that, um, that you, that you want to, and yeah, thank you for your thoughts and prayers.
Good to see you again, Ms. Jones. It's very wanted. Yes, we have to. The next one will be Charles Vardner here.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Citizens. Charles Vardner here. I have a very trivial observation, Mayor. I was in the update and I noticed as I came into a lobby that it's very bare and is there any plans to put up the official pictures back in the, um, in the lobby area?
You mean to picture the council members?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
We want. And everybody, it's real small. They're small. You can't see it. Yeah, it's real small. More larger pictures. Yeah, it just looks so bare as you go into other municipalities. They're very, uh, very visible. And I think we should also be the same.
Thank you. And lastly, we have Rudy Critt.
Good evening, Council, um, Administration, residents, friends. Um, my comments tonight are directed to the police department. I'm gonna remove a little something. I hope it's under three minutes. Uh, Chief Murray. In the late evening of Sunday, February ninth, my family experienced an emergency that required assistance of first responders. Representatives of the Eatonville Police Department arrived expeditiously. I don't know if they would be addressed, but they called up even before the paramedics. Um, they were professional. They were considerate. They were courteous and they were empathetic. They were sensitive and reassuring. They cared to both our physical and emotional emergencies. After paramedics arrived to escort us to the hospital, they remained and they assisted. They went above and beyond by carrying my daughter to the ambulance and entertaining my two-year-old extremely protective and curious son. They provided words of comfort and encouragement to my husband and myself. And when it was time to depart, they assisted my husband, who recently had knee surgery and is on crutches, with getting our son into our vehicle so that they could follow behind the ambulance. And before we could pull off, they insisted on letting us know that they cared about the outcome of our situation and asked us to keep them informed with new developments. I'm sure you're aware of the quality and character of the officers who served this town under your leadership. I'm also sure you're aware that tenure and relationships can affect the level of service constituents receive as well. As a native of this community, I am extremely satisfied with the way Eatonville Police Department responded to my family's emergency. And in one of my most vulnerable moments, I was met with compassionate care. This experience will ever be ingrained in my mind. I am fully aware that every interaction is different and I am forever grateful that this won't happen the way that it did. I hope that your department continues to serve this in this capacity and encourages their counterpart to do the same. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Mayor, Chief, give the names of the officers after insight for recognition.
Can you have some of this? Do you have the names?
Um, Shannon Hernandez, um, Officer Colangelo and Officer Nick.
Nick.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll get your name soon.
All right, thank you for the positive report. Anyone else?
No, not less.
All right. That being the last of citizen participation, we're now ready for our second reading of ordinance twenty twenty five dash one. Two.
For the record, we want to read it.
Go ahead, read the preamble and then we'll have.
Ordinance number twenty twenty five dash one, ordinance of the Town Council, the town of Eatonville, Florida, amending the land development code by consolidating zoning and use regulations into a consolidated use tape, repealing certain revisions related to permitted use, accessory uses, special exception uses and prohibited uses in chapter sixty four, article three, zoning district regulations creating chapter sixty five, use regulations, providing for codification, conflict, severability, and an effective date.
So. Exactly what I want to.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and members of the board and members of the community, Tara Salmeri, serving for the planning department. I have nothing else to really add except for the first reading. Um, I presented the use table, asked if there was any additional questions. I believe that, um, Councilwoman Randolph asked a couple of questions on, um, mobile homes. I did talk to her, um, a couple of weeks ago and I think that I satisfied the questions, which is really defining what a mobile home was versus, um, a regular home. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
All right, we're now going to open this up for any public comments. If you have any things or.
I just want to reiterate.
Say your name.
Oh, Rudy Critt and he should be. I just want to reiterate what I asked about the last time that, um, we might consider the, I believe it was the, um, limitation on the additional dwelling to potentially include, um, maybe an additional story instead of leaving it at whatever the primary dwelling is at case, someone wants to go from a one-story to a two-story.
But just for clarification, so going from one story to the two-story, would necessarily make it larger than the percentage already approved? So you just want, if it's a one-story primary, you just want to be able to go two stories and leaving the size requirement the same?
I would only be impressed that if there was an additional dwelling that was being added to the property that had to be, right, had to be the same. So dimensions or percentage, okay, but it was the second story, maybe additional stories that kind of, that's what put out. Thank you.
Any other comments? And one, the public period is now closed. Are there any? We're going to make the motion. So is there a motion to approve the second reading ordinance twenty twenty five dash one, revisions to the land development code? I'll second it. All right, so, um, it has been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed.
You are trying to read your pitch. Trying to read us.
All right, next, item is the consent agenda, approval of Town Council meeting minutes for, that were in fourth two thousand twenty five. Is there a motion?
Move.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. All right, consent agenda is approved. Final is the council decision for the approval of total board of directors authorizing the executive director to purchase property located at one nineteen Southwest Streets. Okay, yourself, resolution read, right?
No, it's not.
No, this is, uh, and Mr. Johnson can give more insight. This was item that came up in a previous, uh, CRA hall meeting.
I was expecting to have a preamble to read.
There's no preamble.
Yeah.
This is just giving per, per our charter, the.
The reading, because it's going to be approved immediately, right?
Yeah, correct. Per our charter, we have to have approval from the council for CRA to proceed forward to the next level. So it's just a matter of getting the councils okay to forward CRA to proceed for.
Excellent. That's Johnson.
Yes, um, the CRA had been approached by purchasing one nineteen Southwest Street. By the documentation that you need in containment packet, which is, uh, you have the title work, you have the property parcel record, you should have the appraisal, you should have, um, field, uh, L Ohio, that was in, to the own, um, all the documentation that you need to make an informed decision that allows CRA to move forward.
Right. Thank you. So that we, is there a motion to approve the purchase of, to approve the CRA's purchase of one nineteen?
Well. Second question.
Southwest Street. Sorry. I was trying to look for the, the full address. Uh, so it's been moved. Is there, and it's been seconded?
Mayor.
Yes.
For clarity on the motion is, um, the motion is authorizing.
Right.
The director.
So let me, let, let me resend that and let me see it right.
Okay.
Now that the words are in front of me.
Let me set my.
All right. So is there a motion to approve the, the authorization to authorize the executive director to purchase one nineteen Southwest Street for three hundred thirty nine thousand dollars?
Don't move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We have some questions. How it's been named.
Have we got an opportunity to look over this?
Okay, um, I, I have no, I can ask if he has. Okay, yeah. They've mentioned to me whether he has or not. So, yes.
As well as I, um, Attorney Jackson with the CRA.
Because it is CRA, it has been vetted by, um, by attorney Jackson. I know. Awesome.
Right. You have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. I wanted to find out whether or not, why, why was this not considered as a council's decision, I mean, discussion in being a decision?
I think.
We already had like a work, like.
We wanted to discuss it in workshop.
We had an actual CRA meeting.
We had a CRA, but not council.
So today, I was, because of the lateness on your agenda is not written. When I came in, I stated that instead of two items for discussion, there would be three and the one was the land purchase. But we were at seven twenty eight when we had gotten to item two. And that's when I said, if it's okay with everyone, that we go ahead and just do it all at seven thirty. That's why there wasn't a, a discussion. And to move it to the next meeting, now we're under a time limit.
Um, well, it wasn't put on the agenda. So obviously it wasn't considered as a discussion anyway. It didn't have anything to do with time. So it was not meant.
That's what you're saying. Right. That's what you're saying.
Not meant to be on the agenda for a discussion, but to make a decision.
And, and I think that that was simply oversight. It wasn't intentional. All right, any other questions? All right, it has.
You put the, that's.
You have a question?
Okay, so where we are next.
Written.
It's been seconded, accepting questions right now.
Okay, do you see any question here?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Um. Now, I have a question I want to ask about the title. Is this a preliminary title or final title? Because the information that I was reading, it, um, was simulated to me that this was a preliminary, not a unofficial title. Is that, is that so?
Yes, you asked.
Is this a preliminary?
It's the final title that's.
This is a final title?
Pushed it to the transaction.
Oh, I read a document and I get mistaken because it's a final title.
You'll, you'll get, you'll get the, your warrant, your D and post.
And usually these titles have lists what they have to clear up in order to get clear title.
Okay, I was reading.
We are waiting on the search.
Um, this, um, document is on page seventy in the packet. It's dated February the tenth. And it's from the red door title. I was just reading it and then down at the second paragraph, it says that the agent reviewing the title search, maybe summarize what I'm going to say. In this report, over matters of appearing on official land records in the county or city where the property is located, no research have been made for any matters reported in the federal or district report. Not included in this report are matters such as mortgages, judgments, and other means for which the company has found reported satisfactions or releases and possible other matters according to the request of the titles would not appear in the title search. I mean, it says other language, but it says here, the last paragraph, second sentence, this report may not be relied upon by any party, nor may it be relied upon for any other purpose.
So.
So what does all of this means?
So let me explain. The reason we're before you tonight is solely to get your authorization to move forward with the transaction. Once, once it goes to closing, you'll get all the updated documents to clear the title and that provides.
Okay, so what you're saying here that this is for the preliminary to give you authorization.
Yes.
To.
Move forward with transactions.
To.
We haven't got time.
But not necessarily to move ahead to purchase.
Only the, only.
Not the purchase.
Only the CRA. Can prioritize that part of it.
Honey.
That's CRA. That's the CRA.
Right.
So we have to get authorization from the council first. Then you need that the CRA board to finish the execution, completing the transaction.
Okay, all right. Just want to get understanding.
Yes.
Okay. All right. You can move forward.
If there are no other questions, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. And I think that's the last item that we needed to approach. So Mr. President.
Yeah, few, few items for the council tonight, uh, in this black history month. So, uh, I think all those, a big way uh, for me like myself to stand here and, uh, start this capacity. Several things I want to ask Chief to come up. You should have received a copy at our last meeting. There were some questions about the traffic, traffic enforcement report for Catalina Park area, uh, today. Uh, today, we have, uh, since then had, uh, parking violations, actions taken, total twenty-seven. Vehicles were found in violation, uh, by parking in the right way. They have, uh, they addressed it, whether it was an expired pad, deflated tire. Uh, illegal commercial vehicles and abandoned vehicles. So I'm gonna have Chief just give a little more briefing on that, but there had, they have started the process of, uh, ticketing those vehicles and, uh. The, the next steps will take place after.
Good evening, council mayor and citizens. Uh, and, and let's just say this is kind of a, uh, twofold action. Um, we're making the attempt to go, go to door and meet who these residents may be. Uh, to make sure it wasn't, uh, just a senior whose grandson's car is there and it's not really their fault, so to speak. I want to know who actually owned the vehicle, who the vehicle belonged to, et cetera, so. Uh, that was case, we, we worked with Mr. Rudy, uh, via email of those. The difference between less on the way, less on private property, uh, when we, we have some town property. Make sure we are, I'm trying to make it correct, but we started that, we looked at an hourglass accident two Saturdays ago for three hours. Uh, right there at Campus View, uh, that corner you're talking about. I have only touched also the dog, issue for the county. Uh, you know, it's not in the town area, what I'm seeing, but I've noticed here there are. Uh, people who tend to walk their dogs without leashes. Or they're in their house and their dog is two houses over. I know that may be their usual route, but, uh, they for the safety of the, the residents. Uh, we're giving them verbal warnings, but I think that's the due dealership, uh, the, the, the catch around the round. Maybe that'll give incentive for people to, to monitor their mom, how their, how, how, how changing their animals. Like I said, it's twofold process, we're trying to just go door by door, meet with residents, give them the information. I'm a firm believer in information and use imagination, so. We're getting to that, and then from that, we will force, uh, within, some people have already got citations, some people have got warnings. Depending on what the situations are, but we are working in and in with code enforcement. Make sure they're doing their due diligence on the back end for those areas that belongs to their, his, uh, his jurisdiction, so to speak. Any questions for council regarding that matter?
Couple questions about police law, do we have any? I thought we was working on the police law. And then with dogs chained into a fence, I mean, to a tree, about we, the county had something against that. With dog chained to a tree, or they have to be in cages.
Yeah, there's some, Rudy has started that process, it was kind of stated earlier. He has already started looking into it, we brought him off to deal with a, a urgent matter.
Backyards and all that, we, we tend to let court enforcement take their, their road first, and then we need to, we can work with them. Or coincidentally, if it's something of abuse, then of course we would take over state statutes.
Yeah, a question regarding here. And while Chief is there, also, um, the questions about the golf cart registration process, you should have that in front of you. The decals, the home process is there, it was already proven by council with ordinance, this is the actual documentation that goes along. What it, this has been vetted by our legal and the process is ready to start. Chief, um, and I talked to Lieutenant Hernandez, I don't believe there's anyone that's applied for the actual decal just yet.
No, I have not posted it out publicly yet, I wanted to make sure you all were in agreement with what we have. Say, this is what the decal would look like, I've got them off order, I should probably have those within the, the next four or five days. So my goal was to probably, uh, kick it off, maybe March, uh, middle of March. Give the time, but make sure all the people, their beds lined up, our front desk people handle, uh, the registration part of it, how it's coming in. I did, uh, sit down with another municipality for probably two days straight. Uh, we sat there and went over how they did it, how they laid it out. There is signage that we'll have to put out down, just on, you know, both ends of the, of the area, things like that, signifying their golf carts will be crossing. I did make the announcement earlier that we really need to get our, all of our crosswalks need to be pressure washed, they're repainted. Uh, I think we need to have some, some safety, safety markers in the road, they need to be redone, a lot of that is old and outdated. Uh, I think that's going to be a key component to, once this starts growing.
So the question is, are they allowed to drive them now without being registered or?
They shouldn't be driving them.
Because you want to finish the process, what, what this will click on is when you give your date, time, which you were actually registered. The fee, the fee that you paid to register through your card, things of that nature.
Am I the only one that see them riding?
So I think the question is, if you see them riding, can you give them a ticket without them having this information?
They need to let them know, because I think they're only the impression that since we passed this, that they're able to do it, I mean, I see them crossing Kennedy all the time. And that's why I asked. Right, and that's why I asked how many have taken the class, because I know that's one of those stipulations. That they take a class, and I'm seeing people cross Kennedy on them, going to the store, and I thought, okay, that's, let's, let me just see how many, and apparently. Need to get it out that you're not able to drive these things on the road.
It don't take long to get business around. When I first talked to everybody, this.
This has been, I mean, it's been passed.
Uh, they're going to be placing these, I guess, water bill and things like that.
Months ago, when we talked about it, when we passed the ordinance.
Well, we had to make sure legally, what, what standard we was going to use before we started just sending out information. Right, so, so we've given them a grace period from that time, now the chief has done the homework and got the information. Now we can start to send out the, the information, we just didn't want to send it out prior to knowing the process.
No, I just sent out, I noticed that.
When they come to register, they'll be part of that.
With the ones that own them, we tested in there, have some like that Johnson. To have them register there, all that kind of stuff, they're starting having one at a time. So we doing a, a meeting. So I think we need to reach out to them once that happens.
In, in, in our police station now, take the two grand. We have two large monitors now, one in the conference room where I can do full presentations, things like that, and also when I squabble with them, so. I would prefer to do it there, because all paperwork's there, we can make copies, whatever we do, so. Scan it immediately, put it in the computer, we can move forward.
How many people go on that conference room?
Fifteen, twenty? Yeah, I don't expect fifteen, twenty, five at the moment, but. We can hold an even five, ten comfort.
I had always had it breaking up at one of the stakeholder meetings as well, to make sure we just.
I mean, we should have talked about it, just stay on the business.
But I'll make sure also was in, uh, Facebook and, uh, a website as well, which, which will, you'll be able to scan QR code. Or take you right to the website, you'll be able to pull the information and go to fill it out right there. And then just bring it in versus coming in, bringing it up to give you a copy, you can bring it already completed.
Thank you, a couple more things, uh, you should have in front of you, we've had two successful, uh. Ma- master plan meetings that are taking place, should have a flyer, these are also going out in the word bills as well, the next one is on March twelfth. Uh, same location, uh, Elias Hall. Uh, or, and I believe the time's at five thirty, so this was going to be more of an interactive one, so they're going to have a bunch of maps, different options to start. Having small group conversations about the things that have been discussed for the master plan. Uh, so this would be a great one to be a part of. Also, uh, on, uh, March twenty-second, uh, it's going to be, uh, CRA Town, uh. Resource Fair, Housing Resource Fair. Uh, there'll be some more information coming out about that, but this is a great opportunity for those that are. Uh, look, that may have some issues from the hurricane with housing issues. Uh, Mr. Johnson and I went and met with the CDVG department for the county. And there's fundings that's going to be released in March that will assist, uh, homeowners. With, uh, restoration or repair options from hurricane damage. And so they're going to, they're going to actually have the companies come out to, actually have Orange County representatives come out to that resource fair with their computers. To go over the process of the applicant, and they're also making us aware of where those stations and locations for. Signing up and applying for, if you need assistance while pursuing that, so that's taking place. This is the portion that's, uh, in conjunction with the, uh, CDVG DR portion, we, the disaster recovery is the mitigation. And infrastructure improvements from their, from the, uh, government side, this is the residential side that's being made available. So that starts, uh, in March as well. Also, I want to, uh, and we'll be bringing this back for a formal appreciation to our Pub Works Department. Uh, uh, to Mr. Sid, our supervisor, as well as his, uh, four of his staff members. Uh, there was a project that had to take place here at Town Hall, uh, in replacing a pipe. Uh, we've had several backups in the building from sewer, and, uh, there was, there was due to some, some shabby. Pipe work that had been done previously, uh, in order for the, uh, outside company to come in and do the work, it was going to take about anywhere between fifteen. To sixteen thousand dollars. Uh, where, uh, the initiative was taken, especially by one of our, uh, newer employees, but, uh, former employer, Dominic. Uh, Mr. Dominic, I'm drawing a blank on his last name at the moment, uh, Taylor, I miss Taylor, along with Mr. Pence and, uh, Sid, uh. Sid Cyrus and a few other staff members, they worked and that project was done, and I did the numbers for the hours in three days. Along with the parts was about two, two hundred, uh, two thousand and eighty-four dollars. So a significant savings was done by the efforts of the in, in-house employees, so just want to make sure. You're aware that we are doing the training and taking on those initiatives to find ways to save money, uh, from Pub Works. Uh, also, uh, the order bill new rates have been established, uh, they are, we are doing a run, a sample run now. To make sure everything goes off for the next bill, uh, we have looked it over. Uh, sure, I'm sure there are going to be questions, but we have, uh, made sure in admins within the utility building, and I'm overviewing and looking one of those now. Uh, the last part of that is, we have met the dot nine day periods for the impact fees, so we're now in the implementation of that. We're currently working with admins and our planning department along with Tara and Codman, uh, to create that fee schedule. Uh, we're creating a metrics where it's electronically done for the formulas to be submitted. Uh, for any new buildings, new, uh, structures that take place, they'll receive those impact fees for that. So that's a, a accomplishment to this council, thank you for supporting that, and that's in place for any new projects. Uh, uh, which was stipulations of that moratorium, so thank you again for that, uh, and your support for that. Uh, with that, I think I've covered enough tonight, we'll definitely send out our reading file for you all to review a few of the things that are coming up, but I'll take any questions if council has.
Alright, thank you.
On this golf cart? I was just got this tonight. And I see some stuff near that. I mean, I don't care if it's in high school or not, I don't care if you have G U D, but you have to follow the driver license. That's all we need to have on, I'm looking at some stuff on here, just like, your god history in high school. I just, just want you to know that for.
I, I can get.
I wish I would have got this before, we got this tonight, because I, I didn't touch the chief. Because I hadn't went through it, because we just got it on the dosses tonight, so. Your job on here is like, why am I giving my social security number? Why, why am I giving you that? I get my driver license. Why, why you need my social security number? So I just said, it's a little bit messy.
Alright, thank you, is there a? Is there a report?
Oh, no, no.
Turn report, alright, thank you. Councilman.
Thank you everybody for just coming out, being engaged in town business, it's always a pleasure to tell so many people show up. And want to know what's going on in the community, um, okay, on top of this, um. I heard, I overheard someone at the, um. Stating something about, um, councilwoman ran off and, um, council member Daniels. Uh, particularly talking about being heard. And, um, if is it, at any chance that you feel like that you're not being heard by myself? Because I can only speak for me, I, I can't speak for nobody else, I, I'm not hard to try, you can email me, um. You can call me, you can come and talk to me personally after the meeting, if you feel the need to, um, be heard, because I'm here, that's what I'm here for. So I just wanted to, um, bring that up because I heard it, and it kind of, you know. Raise the red flag for me, because I'm like, two people are heard and the other one's not, so I want to make sure that we're heard. And that you're being heard clearly on whatever, um, situations or concerns that you may have. You know, personally or whatever, you know, you can definitely phone me and speak with me on that, so that's that, and, um, first of all, I would like to also thank, um. The, um, Ask Real Estate Company for coming out during the presentation, you guys are doing a sensational job, we're just bringing resources to the community, um, I thank you. For everything that you bring to the table in terms of just wanting to help the community out, so thank you all so very much, and I look forward to working with you guys also. Um, I had an amazing time actually, uh, this past Sunday, I had opportunity to go and, uh, celebrate, um, an anniversary for Chief. Uh, Murray, uh, you know, I was, um, in, um, invited out to this church, and I tell you, man, to, um, hear the word from, um. Someone that I know very well, Bishop, um, Kimbo, he, he brought it home, um, this past Sunday, so I definitely want to appreciate. Um, and happy anniversary also, um, Chief, on, um, all the things that you're doing over there at your church, you have a beautiful, um, congregation, you know, they, they, they. Embraced me, and I felt nothing but love when I walked in that building, so thank you and kudos to you also, sir. Mr. President, I also, also like to thank you and your staff, you guys are doing a significant job, and I have to, um, bring the equation of, um, Mr. Johnson in, even though. He's on the CRA side, but you guys working collaboratively together, collecting, and, and doing all the things to push this town forward is impeccable. And, and with you two guys, I think we got a dream team, and I can honestly say that, seriously, and I'm not just saying it just to say it. I'm, I'm saying it sincerely, you know what I'm saying, I appreciate everything that you guys bring to the table, everything that we're, you know, doing to push this town forward. Um, I tell you, I've been sitting up here for nine years, and I'm telling you, man, I, we've had some bad days up here. I don't see that going on too much, you know, have, we may have some disagreements, which we're going to disagree on some things. But it's not like it was, and I can appreciate that, so I just want to let this, um, panel know that I appreciate. How we're legislating, how we're moving forward, you know, just doing everything to make sure that we're, you know, add empowerment to, um, do what's rights of citizens of this, um, community. So kudos to you guys also, um, a big congratulations to Eswood High School, um, which is my alumni. I'm having opportunity to go out there on Monday night and, um, watch a show, basically, you know what I'm saying, these kids, they're phenomenal. Um, they're excellent kids in the classroom, and they do a great job on the basketball court as well, so kudos to you guys for making it to the, um. Regional finals, if you win this game, you go to state. So, um, my hats go off to, um, Coach Mason, who's the head coach over there, Eswood along with his staff, a lot of those guys are from Inver that are actually coaching, so. They're pouring back into the community also, and a lot of the kids are from Inver as well, so, um, my hats go up to you guys, congratulations, everyone, and good luck on Thursday night playing Evans High School. Also, just, you know, a big, um, happy Black History Month, I know it's a short month, the shortest month of the, um. Year, but it, it, it's impactful though, you know, I, I, I think if we, you know. Coincide with each other and just continue doing all the things that's necessary to work together with whoever it is, it doesn't matter what creed or race or whatever, man, we just need to continue to pave them the way. And doing things that's going to be sustainable for this community and for our kids, 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 you know, I grew up in this community. And, um, like I tell people often, man, you don't have to move by the Inver to better yourself, of course, going to college, coming back and just going into your community. Is always something that you, you want to do, and that's what I did, I had an opportunity to do that, and I thank God for the position that I sit in, just to be able to help people. And when I sat on the board for CAB, or with the one that's counted, being the first elected official to be a chairman for that particular board. Um, my motto was changing lives and happiness, you know, if I'm not doing that, I'm not doing my job, so. Those are my two jealousness and moving forward, doing anything to, um, empower our community. We really need to speak about, um, the dog leash, I know I heard, um, Vice Mayor spoke, speak about it, it was going to be something that I talked about anyway, I know we talked about this. And I do apologize for not bringing this up during our meeting, Mr. President, but I think it's something very important, especially losing. Um, a young man, a, a look, a kid, man, you know, and, and, and to, um, for a parent to watch their kid. Get mold like that, you know, and, and not be able to do anything, man, i- is heartbreaking, and I don't want that to happen in our community, I don't want any fatalities. To happen to anybody, and I, and I can tell you a story also, that's why I'm going to, um. Chief Murray, you're doing a great job with the police department, I'm telling you, man, when I made that call to you, I appreciate you. You answered the phone on the first ring, but not only that, man, you had your officer come out immediately. You know, a lot of times you have to sit and wait, he came out immediately, and I can tell you this right here, I was at a standstill walking out my door because I couldn't walk out, because I was hostage. By a pit bull. That was out, that, that, that wasn't on the leash. Someone just felt the need to lead the dog because they moved out the community, and, and, and that's. I can't even wrap my head around that, you know, you got kids out here, you know, I got kids running around, you got kids running around in the neighborhood. And to leave their dog unleashed like that, man, and I understand exactly what, um, former, um, councilwoman, um, Thompson was saying. About the dog, because she was actually in a situation. We got to fix that issue ASAP, not, we got to do it ASAP, so that's something that we definitely got to address, so I appreciate you and your, um, police department. For moving at a swift, um, um, rate and getting out there, I really do appreciate that, I do. And getting out there, I really do appreciate that, I do. Um, my condolences, man, I had an opportunity to go to, um, Kaylee, um. Um, Jones funeral, she's family by marriage, um, it was, it was, it was just a sensational. Um, hung gone, you know, i- 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 you know, if anybody that have kids, man, i- it will break your heart, you know what I'm saying, but I know. To be asking for the body to be present with the Lord, that young lady is smiling down on us right now, and I can't do nothing to give all my, you know. Faith to God, knowing that she's in a better place right now, and my condolences go out to the parents, man, Ms. Jones. Um, and Mr. Jones, man, you know, for you guys losing your, um, your baby, my heart still is with you, so if you're out there and you're looking. I, I'm still praying for you, I'm praying for strength and comfort, uh, during this time of grieving, and this is a very difficult time, so, uh, my condolences out to you. Also, I strongly, um, recommend that we do get, um. One more code enforcement officer, I know we're gonna have to probably, you know, allocate, and, you know, make some adjustments in, in terms of, you know, making a. Um, a limit for the, um, budget to do so, but I think it's, um, very much needed, especially with. Um, twenty-seven vehicles in violation, you know, in one particular, you know what I'm saying, setting, which is one area. I think that's very troubling, I think it's problematic, I think it's something that we definitely need to address, I know we can't do it all, I know, Chief, your hand is still, you know, you, you, you're dealing with a lot. And, um, what you're dealing with, you're doing it, uh, you're doing your diligence though, but I know we also need the man for us to be able to, you know. Correct these issues that we're having too, so one man being on code enforcement is not gonna do it, I said that from day one. You know, by sitting up here, we, we're definitely gonna have to move forward with, you know, um, adjusting and making that adjustment to add someone else that are certified. Which they can't, they, they gotta be certified in order to, uh, serve in that capacity, so I definitely, um, strongly recommend that we do that. Um, and lastly, this, this going to the attorney, do we have any, um, lawsuits or litigations, um, towards the town?
Um, no, sir, there's no pen name, uh, litigation that we are aware of, sir.
Okay, thanks so much, and then also, I know we had, um, some elected officials that had passed away, um, I can't.
Senator Thompson.
Senator Thompson, uh, 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 you know, we've seen her, we've seen the scope of work she's done. Um, throughout the state of Florida, in Eaneville, Orlando, you name it, she's always been a fighter. And, um, you know, my, my condolences go out to her and her family, man, um, you know, it's always heartbreaking seeing anybody pass, you know. Um, you just don't wanna see it, but I know we all gotta go that way, but, you know, the, 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 the scope of work that she's done. You know, seeing that picture that her and Mary Gardner, um, took, man, it kinda, you know, you know, i- 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 it takes you back, man, you know, cause I know. How she felt about Eaneville, so, um, if her family's worth it, um, Washington night, um, my condolences to you. And, uh, I'll be praying for strength and comfort for you guys as well, and that's my report, thank you all.
Oh, good evening, everyone, um, once again, uh, I'll make this decision again, but it doesn't have to be called prayer. We call words of affirmation, and we can still have this tradition that we've done for years to have. Uh, Pastor Crain come up and give us words of affirmation instead of prayer, we can get around it, it's always another way of skinning a cat. Uh, also, I agree with Ms. Joyce, I had the opportunity to, um, be on the board to Mr. Singh, and I wasn't a fan at first. Really thought he was just here for the money, but I had the opportunity to read a book, Seven Habits of How to Effectuate People, and the section that, uh, that has paradigm shift. And it's a story, and my paradigm shift changed with Mr. Singh after sitting down and talking with him for about thirty minutes. To show his love that he had for this town, I really thought he wasn't asking. I, 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 I really did, to have administration to tell me something, and then for him to say, that's not right. You get what you want, councilman, because you do total respect for Mr. Singh, and it was a travesty that we lost that man, because I think he was gonna turn this. Town around, for someone to, uh, bring a water issue up, and that was a touching situation. But for him to bring that up to say, I want the best for this community, not being from here, it hurt my heart to see that man leave, but. Thank you, Ms. Joyce, uh, you are heard, and we are still in this fight. Um, I hope that Mrs. Johnson, uh, the grant coordinator, I hope she wasn't offended. You know, I don't know, I don't know, it just sounded like offended to me, but I was, I was wondering, because we hadn't had a grant coordinator before, and we'd gotten grants done. We've had grants initiated by the park kids, and they got done, so my question was, you know, not poking at them, but what are you, what are you gonna initiate some new ones for us? And I understand the ones that we've had, you coming in, making sure that we're doing everything to get those established, so just please. Well, sure, no, wasn't coming at her, and I hope she's not offended, but we've gotten through with grants before, before she was here, and I was just wondering, you know, what she bringing to the table. And, uh, my question is, is there a firm, you know, we have firms all the way around, is there a grant firm that have. People or, you know, a team that can come in and do grants for us that, hey, this what we got, how much you gonna charge us to get this done, boy? So apparently, the other Miss Johnson said it's so much work in doing this, which, I don't know how many of us know about that, you know. That if it is, then, you know, maybe she needs some help, maybe we get a firm in that can just do our grants for us to help us out on that, you know, just some suggestions to help me out. Um, with, with, with the acquisition of this land, uh, are we able to use Access, is that the name of your company? You know, what better way to have this company to come in and maybe show us what they can do? They can come in and, just, just a suggestion, just to see, they're here, they did an awesome presentation. Let's get this company to try to see, you know, what they can help us with, they don't have. Uh, I had a resident that approached me, they missed the Duke meeting, what, um, did they miss e- everything, or what, what do they need to do? Or would Duke contact them?
Duke gets sent out through the mailers to every resident home.
Okay.
Uh, and they're still going around there, as long as they're in the community still.
Exactly, right.
They'll still get an opportunity, if you have an address, I can pass it on to them.
Right.
But they are circling back.
Got you.
The ones that are not home when they do come.
Right, right, I'll, I'll definitely get that address to you.
Would you like the phone number?
And get to the residence, so they can call?
It's eight, one, eight, five, five.
One, eight, five, five.
Two, two, seven.
Two, two, seven.
Two, nine, one, eight.
Two, nine, one, eight, did you say eight, say that again?
Eight, five, five.
Eight, five, five, two, two, seven.
Two, nine, one, eight.
Two, nine, one, eight, okay, so that's for everybody out there that's listening, get in contact with Duke so they can come. And also, my condolences to Ms. Senator Thompson, she was an awesome woman, it was a pleasure always talking to her, uh, whenever you got a chance to meet. Uh, God stay prayed up, uh, we had dire times here in our, in our country, and, uh, have a blessed night.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, well, I'm sorry, Councilman Randolph.
Okay, thank you, uh, I have, first of all, I have, I have, uh, two questions for Mrs. King. At the closing of my comments about the land purchase. Uh, you started laughing, was there something very funny that I need to be aware of?
Yeah, I bring it up to you, it wasn't a, it wasn't a laugh at you, it was, you had given them the authority to move forward without the rest of the council, and I thought that was very cute. I apologize if I didn't, um, practice any restraint, it was funny.
I don't know, I saw Martha Johnson's face like, oh. Okay, that's funny, there's something to laugh at. Okay, then, uh, uh, other concern, which I did contact you about this, but I want others to know, cause they have, it has been discussed, about that click, click, click noise.
Yes, I am checking into that, and I was, for the record, she did ask me about it, um, I don't know if you all remember when I first did the presentation and digitizing the room. Um, originally, I wanted to do the pods. Because of the quality of the microphones and them being so close together, it caused feedback, and because we are, um. You know, set up with the surround sound and the digital, um, um, synchronized system, you know, I have to play around with some adjustments. Cause really, the microphones really shouldn't be this close together, because these are, um. Multi-directional microphone, they pick up within three feet, so if you have two microphones less than three feet to each other, it feeds off each other.
Okay.
But I know when I had asked the question about microphone, everyone wanted their own microphones, and so, um, we, we're, we're making the adjustments. And, uh, I'm gonna have to play around with the pods.
The, the, those on the outside gives feedback that how terrible the sound is on the outside, so that has a reflection upon, upon us.
Yeah.
So if we can make that correction.
I, I'm not an IT guru, but I will inquire about it, now, I'm getting positive feedback, you're getting negative feedback.
Well, I'm getting negative and positive, I'm just saying.
I think sometimes, um, it's not so much of a cool equipment issue, sometimes it's ours, it's our, um, wifi.
Okay, uh, thank you very much for explaining that, the Duke Energy, um, concept was very good in the neighborhood, I still see that they're. Doing a very positive thing in, in the neighborhood, um, I agree with, um. Pastor Morgan there about the, uh, pictures, cause he did ask me about that, and I know it was brought up sometime ago in the past, but we like to see. Uh, good for us to move forward and get better pictures of our representatives, and including all the council. Um, next thing is, um. I heard Mr. Preston said about the rising water bills for the next go-around coming up, okay? That was a good question, and I'm still waiting on some public records requests, and so, um, I'm gonna follow up. I did follow up on some of those the other day, and I have some other ones that needs to be, have not been answered. You have a copy of all of those that I sent to you and Mrs. King?
Yes, we're working on those, and you should have all those this week.
And when can we get the leech ordinance, um, before?
I'm sorry, Doug.
The leech, the dog leech.
So I'll, I'll touch base to see where, uh, our, uh, where Attorney Ryan is with, uh, Mr. Barudy on that matter. But I will touch base and I'll respond back to that.
Okay, all right, now, I wanna find out, um, what will be a great project, would it be on the CRA side or the town side? If we do the potholes in the streets, what is that, cause we got potholes in the streets, so what would that be under the town? That would be on the town, okay, and what about, what Chief mentioned about the crosswalks, would that be town? That town, okay.
He said potholes and crosswalks?
Yeah, crosswalks, he mentioned like crosswalks, which is very important, uh, cause I, I had no respect to. Okay, other than that, um, I don't have anything else to say, I'd like to say that, uh, my condolences to Senator Thompson's family. And also, um, pray for a speedy recovery for Sister Johnson, she has always been an advocate here. Being at meetings and participating, being so loyal and humble to her town, I just wanna thank you for all that you do. Appreciate you very much, lady, and also, um, thanks to everybody, and be safe, and have a nice evening, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I think I'm gonna have to come out tonight, and my condolences go out to Senator Thompson, and all the families under, um. Regency, um, to those families, and to Ms. Lynn, I just started swapping some of those things back in the past, we used to walk a lot. And, uh, I hope you get well soon, I do miss you in this diocese, up here in the office, underneath the chambers, so welcome back. You've been missed, so that's all I have, and I will get with you about this call card.
Yes.
Alright, so kudos to pretty much everything everyone has said, so note of the crosswalks, I know, Miss Preston, you and I were talking. Um, Dr. Johnson is actually doing a very good job, and. I remember when I brought a team of, a team, and I asked if we approve a grant writing team, I brought them like two or three times, they kept. It was no, but grant opportunities were coming, so we took, we took the opportunity to go for the grants. But then we needed someone like Dr. Johnson to come along to make certain that we could keep those grants going, and she's done a great job, um. Ms., Ms. Johnson, good to see you again, uh, thank you for the positive comments. You know, sometimes you, you really do kinda get tired of all the negative comments, um, and. But this administration, this staff, you're doing a great job, and I, I appreciate it, I, cause you don't always hear, but I, I wanna keep saying thank. For all that you do, and with that being said, oh, question, if I see a dog running loose, can I not call the county? Because I, I remember I had an issue with the dog, I, I called the, the county.
Yeah, I'm working directly with the, the lead director of the animal control, but I think that's what we got, the point we're at now. Kinda create an initiative.
Right, but in the meantime, in the meantime, that, that is always an option.
It's something where it's a residence involved, we can have one part, so we can walk to that.
Yes, absolutely.
We had me on that situation with the dog, because, you know, thank God, I got them on speed dial, and of course, I would call the county if I was in hostages. Walking up my house, and I needed to walk out the house, cause I was running late, and the pit bull sitting there holding me hostage, a grown man, and I'm like, you know, what? But anyways, I appreciate you for this.
And, and I mean in general, I don't mean, you know, if you, yeah. Anyway, everyone drive carefully, uh, with that, I move for adjournment. Alright, it's been moved in second, I'm ready to say aye. Uh, so, none, it is eight thirty-five, we are now adjourned.